What's good guys and girls? Undermyself here. Bring you once again. Well, you know what the name of the game is. Alright, so when I left off, I had the biscuit. Okay, hello like. Yep, wilderness, okay. Okay, I think we're good. The uh, left off, the spinning wheel, and the distillery. Alright, so, we have this going, so this is pretty much um... An easier way of getting um, the uh vanilla, I'm having a brain fart, vanilla alchemy set, whatever you want to call it. The uh vanilla alchemy set, or whatever. And uses clay jar, sorry, and glass. So, no, that's called coke. But anyway, uh, what were we gonna make? We were going to make... Recording timer's in the way, so can't really see what page I'm on. Okay, second page. Uh, this one. Gonna make the uh bowline. So... Trout plants and cobwebs. Trout plants, interesting. Alright, well, let's make it since we have... Since we have... Wait, do we have? I don't think we do. No, we don't have bone right now. We cannot get boned right now. Uh, let's... Put that in there for now. That, 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 well, just... All of this will be used gradually. Just put all that in there. That and that. Alright, so we got some puzzles, mycelium here. Keep saying puzzle, it's not puzzle at all. Come on shelf, concentrate. Oh, of course you didn't even know the name of the vanilla alchemy set. The hell is that anyway? Come on. What is it? It's bugging me now. Where are you being? Where are you being? Come where I'm to. Brewing stand, there we go. Thank you. Yeah, so it's a, an alternative way of the brewing stand. Okay, so mouse sensitivity, we're just gonna turn that down a little bit. Nope, because now I can't whip around quickly. Okay, there you go. There you go, they're still stuck in the well. Alright, well, I need a weapon, for one. So, let's make one. I have iron on me. So, let's do that. Boop, and boop, boop. There we go. Excellent. There we go. Alright, so we're 1.7, so the only way we defend ourselves is like that. Okay. So, witch is above me. It's a, a friendly witch. Uh, gradually, is there anything out there? No, I thought I meant that. Okay. Yep. Uh, what was it saying? Oh yeah, the uh, the friendly witch is... Uh, let's just go to bed real quick. Uh, the friendly witch is... Uh, the friendly witch is pretty much um, another villager. But um, when you... Okay, just checking, there's no more creepers. Alright, beautiful. Let's go over this way. Because uh, the witches uh gradually uh sell you stuff, but that's... It's only with the more you do uh witchery, but... I mean, why don't you want her to sell stuff? I mean, look at her. It's like Instagram model grade body right there. Swear, I just want a permanent press on my clothes on her. Alright, so clearly I'm not high enough level to get some stuff from her. But, when you do, uh you will eventually be able to buy from them. So, we'll be able to get more ingredients with our small but steady and possibly expensive little source for, little resource thing here. So um, I'm also gonna take a minute and agree that uh, you know, hey, shelf, you weren't all that prepared for this mod. No, I really wasn't. Um, I've only dabbled in it like once, maybe twice, and I don't remember how I did everything. I really don't. So, we're only going to invest in the uh alchemical part of uh, of the witchery mod. But uh, next year, I'm gonna play this uh, my spare time, play this mod specifically in my spare time. And um, and see what I can do and what needs to be done uh, to do the necrotic ver- the necrotic side of uh, of witchery. So, for next year for Halloween, uh we'll be dabbling in demon summoning, undead summoning, and all other spooky scary stuff. And uh, we'll also dabble into some blood magic. I've decided to run the blood magic mod uh, next year for Halloween. So, that's a year away, so, I mean, things could change, but so far, uh I decided on the blood magic for next year for Halloween. But I'll give us a little more of a head start, and I'll start the uh, the mod in August rather than, rather than middle of October. Uh, because I'm pretty sure it's a little more in depth in the witchery. So, I'm just running around talking, not paying attention. Alright, how's our crops doing? Uh, still got some entry spaces because I didn't plant all my resources. Alright, do I have? Yeah, I got those, those. Okay. Oh no, 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 I need those as well. Anything else? Cotton, there's cotton there. Alright. Um, the rest of the seeds, uh in case you, in case you're just joining us, uh the rest of the seeds and everything else um, is being used for uh upcoming November's mod for agriculture, Pam's Harvest Craft, whatever you want to call it. Sorry, I just had tacos. I'm good. Alright. Uh, so for Pam's Harvest Craft, uh it's gonna be done for November. Uh, and celebration of, and celebration of my, of my American friends who are gonna be celebrating Thanksgiving uh, next month. So, I'll be doing agriculture, you know, just growing, gathering herbs, just basically, it's basically a farming mod. So, it'll be pretty much a farming sim. I mean, if you're not into that, that's fine, you don't have to join me for it. That's perfectly okay. I don't know why I did that, just made it more complicated than it had to be. I don't even know why I'm making sticks. Not construing at all. Alright. So... So, for November, I'm gonna be doing this. This is pretty much what I'm gonna be doing. Uh, let's do that. There we go, and... There. Alright. So that'll go there. Uh, we might as well put more here. There we go. Is there any more? Yep, right there. Boop, and boop. There's water artichoke seeds, I think, that can go there. I don't know if I have any. Cactus fruit, no. Cactus fruit seed, okay. Uh, belladonna, I'll just take, I'll just take that, and it's fully harvested. Macris scullion. Where, where? Okay. Up there, up here. I'm going over the crates because of the armor that I'm wearing. That's what I'm wearing, so I don't even have to jump to do that. So, if I walk by the corner, I'll go up there, and if I'm anywhere near this, I'll just reset the ground, and I'll have to uh, and I'll have to sow it again. So, rather than going through all that fun stuff, scullions. Grab that too. And turn on blueberry. There we go. So yeah, I'm just kinda tracing. There we go, water artichoke. I got them. And more. And more. Uh, there we go. Alright. Yeah. Uh, oh, good. I can just replant it like that. Oh, alright. I thought you could put sticks in there, because I got ground underneath it. That's okay. So... Uh, what else should I make slash do? Oh yeah, I was gonna make that uh weapon. But, I don't have a bone. I don't think I have a bone. Eh, I'm boneless. Eh, anyway. Enough with the cheesy joke shelf, come on. Most people are laugh to us intolerant, you know this. Alright, uh... Well, let's grab that. Uh, suppose we can make a bookshelf. I'm just killing time here, because there's literally nothing I can do until nighttime comes, and then we're gonna go skeleton hunting. I'm probably going to... Where the hell's my house? Right over here. I'm more than likely going to put on my stronger armor to face them. Which is... Not in here. It's one of the crates over by the forge. But I'm just gonna put all my agr- yeah, it's agriculture. So we're gonna do that, and Pam's Harvest Craft. It's a mixture of both. A mixture of both for Thanksgiving, just to clear that up. Anyway. Uh, what time is it? Four... Okay, doesn't tell me the time. Uh, looks pretty close to afternoon. Well, that's... Hmm. Art and flesh. Crapola. What's that? Dirt? Okay, gravel. No, pattern just. Uh, sure. I don't know which one has my patterns in it, but whatever. Alright, so let's just plop that right there. Actually, I should check out one here. Yep, that's the one with the patterns. Boop. Uh, should really get rid of all these extras. No point in having extras. I don't know why the game generates so many extras. It's ridiculous. There you go. Alright. Hey guys, you want some, want some bath toys? There you go. There you go. There you go. I got more. There. Play nice, and make sure you scrub behind your ears. Okay. Let's grab my good armor. We'll trade it off. Because I don't know about you guys, but I find this stuff scarier than what I have on. Bam! It's a little less scary with the, with the, with the film set on, but uh, you get the idea. I'm surprised I got the full set, because the... If you didn't catch my last video, uh accidentally got rid of an obelisk spawner. And a few of the guys that spawned, uh, there's, there's four priests that were, that were chanting, or whatever. So, when I, so when I killed them, they each, they each dropped like a fresh piece. I was like, what? Really? Okay. I was so happy. Oh yeah, I thought I would have cut those boots off. I gotta jump to get up there. That's okay. Alright, let's see. Puff Gary. Nothing in here. Okay, cool. Give me that. Just got me in. Clay and bread. Well, okay, slightly disappointing. Oh. Alright, I see a skeleton. To battle! Come on skeletons, I got some bone to pick with you. Get you. There we go. There's a creeper, I'm in shivus. He's got a crap in me. There you go, creeper. You're on the other side of the house. Alright. I hear... I hear a skeleton. There you are. What the? What the shit was he wearing? You all saw that, right? Alright, well... Geez. I look like a red son of the hedgehog. Alright, that's cool. Well, that we're looking for. Got bone. Told you I had a bone to pick with him. Alright, so we got that. Jeez, I hardly took any damage. This armor's amazing. Alright. Uh, let's see. Ew, let's go this way. I hate walking in leaves, especially when I know there's creepers around. It's like, no, don't, don't, don't blow up. That was an armored skeleton, wasn't it? Sorry, that's just like going through my head right now. I was like, what the hell was he wearing? I've never seen a skeleton look like that. I hear ya. Where you at? There you are. There you are. Okay. Jeez. How do I look now? Okay. I hear you guys. Oh, you're in there. Okay. Oh, and I hear an enderman. Alright. Well, luckily you guys don't like water, so... Yep, they're friggin' attacking endermen, jumping like water. They hate it. Snarl. Okay. Beautiful. There we go. Okay. So, let's eat. See, realize I lost quite a chunk of health there. Alright. Who's next up on my chopping list? Do you like my spike scraper? Yeah. Well, you are a little prick. Where you at, man? I know you're there somewhere, you're looking at me. No? Alright. Yeah, I see ya. Yeah, you're just gonna stay right there, aren't ya? Nah, I can't reach him. Any other skeletons drop a bow? Probably did. I'm too... Too overbeared and difficult to pick it up. Alright, let's see if we can fix that. Uh, I don't need that for now. Okay, and if we can just grab that, because I know where I can put that now. There we go. Alright. Boop, okay. Uh, let's do, no. There we go, and please. Oh, yeah, okay. Please. Please, please. There we go. So that's pretty much my armor. Well, I look like the wicked ranger of the west. Alright. Okay. Oh jeez. I hear ya. I hear ya. Where you at? Ow! I heard ya. Alright, well, we know what we're looking for, so... Okay, so let's cut the, cut the night short. That little bugger is right there, and now I can't sleep. Frick. Now I wanna go around, because I'll blow up my house. Well, that's an issue. Alright. Well, let's try to fix that, shall we? Let's do this. Because I don't get string on me. Or not? Alright, well, I'll leave it there for now. I really don't have string on me. Spider eye? Oh, well that's probably because I'm full of friggin' garbage. Uh, just put that, just put all this in here for now. Thanks, uh, yeah. It's just, yep, yep, yep. Just for now. Might as well put the leather in there too, because armor and all that good stuff can be made from it. Anyone else? Like a spider, something, anything? No? No, you're just... Wonder if I do this? Okay, I can hit the... Alright. Well, that's something. There. Look at that. And there's another one. Where are you at? Are you inside or outside? You're outside. Alright, you mean? And you're like probably right there. Okay. Where are you? Alright, well, let's not play with dynamite, so... Ooh, right. So this is where the, all the zombies and undead are coming from. What's up? Beautiful. Anything else? No? No, not chest. Nope, no chest. Alright. Don't wanna take down the haybill? I will later. Alright, so I'll get the haybill later. Um, let's figure out what we can... What we can do uh for, for the alchemy, because that's why we're here to begin with. There we go. Alright, I am gonna get your attention, one way or another. I'm coming for that witch booty. Seriously. Can iron me any day. So, let's grab... Actually, let's grab my other armor. Now that's daylight. Nice. Yeah, now I'm the wicked ranger of the west. Okay, um, I should have string somewhere. Come on. There you go. Seriously shelf, can you not go through a frigging door? What a freak. Alright, so let's harvest this and this. You're almost done. Uh, look at those. Okay, sure. Okay. Hmm. I don't know if I planted the right ones. I don't want the mature ones. Uh, I must have. I must uh, alright, um... Careful there to crops. Eight five, alright. Hmm. Mm-hmm, hmm. Let's... Oh, that's why. Okay. Mature ones. I don't know why, it's practically the same thing. But I just like these ones better. I don't know why. Really weird for me. But uh, let's see, let's see, let's see. Right. I know what we're gonna do. I remember. I remember. Do I have money on me? No I don't. It's probably on my chest. Yep, there. Just grab one, because that's all we need. The rest we, oh, the rest we have. Alright. It's actually kinda freaky, because it's like, I fought you guys before, and I'm like, why are you winning? I'm like, why are you winning my thing? There's nothing here, here to spawn you guys with, so I'm just like, uh, but it's my armor stand. It's scary. Where that weapon, there it is. Okay. Boop, boop, and boop. Nice. Alright. I like shears, but can harvest trout plants, cobwebs. I don't understand that. But, we will figure it out. That is why I'm playing this mod. Figure stuff out and see how things tick and work and all that other fun stuff. Figure stuff out and see how things tick and work and all that other fun stuff. Alright. Um... Well, let's see if we can learn anything from the books I've collected. 'Cause you can't open them and you can't read them, so let's have a little study session, shall we? Where'd I put 'em? I think I know where everything is, but no, of course I don't. Nope, alright. I put 'em over by my... By this. Nope, well, hang on. Let's put that there, that there. Uh, that there, that in there. That, and that. There. Yeah, that's why I got there quick, I was like, "Wait, something might be coming." There's all my books, alright, there we go, uh, no, yep. Yep. Yes. Alright. So let's lock ourselves in the house, and have a little study session, and see what's up. Kind of comfy on the bed. "A witch may use a brassiere to burn materials with magical purpose, and conjure that that witch is no longer of this world." Place the oranges in the brassiere. Brassiere, pull a, pull a dead being back in this world from beyond. Warm wood. Little bat, graveyard dust. Oh, okay, so this is for, this is for, um, necromancy, okay. Alright, not that one. Let's try this one. "Trying to civils with a mystic branchelos, practitioner to sculpt natural energies. Only infused practitioners can use this type of magic. Forbidden curses require the infernal infusion." Pull a dropped item. But, jeez, sounds like an ultimate move in, in the Super Nintendo game. Left, up, right, right, down. Deckless, not to be, anyway. Create water, up, up, right, right, down. Okay, so this is like, so this is just straight up magic. Okay. Okay. Lock a door, okay. Cause can, okay. Torture, eh, forbidden. Forbidden torture. Let's just skip that, alright, dig. Okay. Counter stupify. Boy does society need that spell. Alright, uh, up, left, up, right, left, up, right. Okay, so this is just straight up magic, alright. So this will come in handy. Because, we need... Mystic branch, alright, we need some mystic branch. Let's be over here. Yep. How the hell do you get that? No crafting thing for it. Exhale the horned one, alright. Well, I'm pretty sure I have saplings. Zombies are around again. Mer. No one in there, why you, why you being stupid? Oh yes, there is, okay. You guys are all hiding in there, alright, cool. I'll have to put a friggin' iron door up there, 'cause they have an extra one. Keep your annoying little buggers out. Well, that's what you get for living in a village. Now there's no enemies near, okay, so we figured out a spellbook. There's one thing. Now, circle magic, what is this? Cross circles using color chalk with a heart glyph at the center. Okay. An altar is often needed for, is often needed for power. Drop the fokai items into the circle. Activate the heart glyph. Okay. Pulls the circles into the talisman, circle talisman, redstone. Alright. Transposition. Okay. Interesting, okay, this is cool. "Ride of sanctity, let's not enter the circle, lasting indefinitely, requires sixteen power a second." Feathering redstone. Ah, okay. Imprisonment, let's just not leave the circle. Well, that's interesting, this is actual witchcraft here. "Conjure a dome, impenetrable monsters lessen indefinitely, but requires twenty-four power." Alright, so pretty much the same thing. Hmm. Okay, uh, what else? Ride of brood thrust, raise a volcano. Alright. Wow. Stone magma cream, golden sword, and the tombstone. Holy jeez, alright. Raise volcano, okay. Call a focused lightning storm inside the circle. Outside the circle. Well, I think we wanna do outside. I don't think performing inside the circle and saying, "Hey, strike me down, lightning," I don't think that's what we wanna do. I am not a lightning rod. Alright, so this is actually starting to get interesting. Well, it's starting to get interesting now. Hmm. Well, that's okay, as always, next year, but I will play with this off-camera. However, if you're really into this mod, and you'd like it to continue, I can pro- more than likely do both. Both, 'cause, I mean, witchcraft was like a really big thing. Uh, when it came to, uh, the settlement between, between the natives and the settlers. Witchcraft was often pointed at among settlers, especially among women, especially if they're smart or whatever, which is friggin terrible. "Oh, a smart woman, she must be a witch, what's wrong with you?" But, that's just how things were those days, and it's unfortunate. But, that's just how they were, it sucks. But anyway, not gonna get into that. But, uh, anyway, if you're, if you're interested in seeing more of this mod, and you don't want me to play off-camera, but you'd rather me play on-camera, I will more than gla- more than gladly to, uh, play this part of it, or just play it in general. 'Cause it's not exactly all that, all that spooky, really. If I'd have known there was, there wasn't so much to go into, I more than likely would have started earlier. But I didn't think it was this much in depth. So, that's, so that, that's, that's my mistake. Alright, uh, sky rough. Outside of the circle, iron sword, wood ash, a tombstone, okay. So this stuff looks pretty cool. To block out the sun. Wow, alright. What else? Broken earth. Part the earth, the position, the position of the fokai controls the direction. Holy crap. Never mind witchery, I'm like a friggin' earth mage with this. Remember earth magic, remember that was a thing in some, in some video games? This is awesome. So yeah, guys, and guys and gals, I mean, if you want me to continue playing this part of it, by all means. I will gladly be the outcast, uh, um, I guess witch of the, of this village. Uh, that they can't simply capture, and I can either wreak havoc or protect them. Up to you, I'll leave a, I'll leave a vote in the comment section. Alright, what else? Moving earth. Alright. Okay. Holy jeez, okay, oh, I see. Does it change anything else? No, just this. Broken earth, moving. Okay, so it depends on the circle. Fifteen by fifteen. Seven by eleven, seven by seven, okay, so almost every other spell is seven by seven, alright. What else? Broiling, cooks any food place... Really? Cooks any food place in the circle, may overcook food. Alright. Tombstone, blaze rod, wood ash, blaze powder, what else? Alter power, huh, what's the difference? Doesn't say alter power, this just has a different setting. Alright. "Ride of fertility makes nearby land fertile, and heals sick villagers." Interesting, so I can be a healer, that's cool. Alter power, three thousand. That's a lot, though, holy crap. Alright. Oh, nature's power, release to nature, nature's power, release nature on a barren area. Okay. Ride of shifting seasons. Pick, pick biome with biome fokai and glowstone. Oh wow, I have to be a really powerful witch for this one. I need a coven of four or more. Wow, alright. Ride of the forest, grow a forest. Place, replace the sapling for the desired type. Wicker bundle, okay. Bound waste is optional, alright. Banishing. Cool. Alright. Cool. Okay. Okay. Ride of summoning, call forth a demon, the inner area must be, must be clear seven by seven by four blocks. Refine evil blaze powder, into pearl villager. A villager. That's funny. I was gonna expect you to add it to the list, I was like, "Oh, you know, just items and villager." Really? Alright. Ride of summoning, call forth demon, okay. Okay. Ride of summoning, call forth an amp. Find evil, blah 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 blah, okay. A wither. Demon, wait, what? Call forth a demon, the demon from the, from a mirror. Why does that say "the" demon, though? Summon a witch. Why would you summon a witch? Whatever, summons a familiar defined things. Try giving the familiar a diamond. Oh, that was cool, alright. Some of the familiar find thing, that's cool, alright. Jeez, there's eighty-nine pages of this, alright. So before we get more into that, I think I wasted enough time doing that. Alright, so that seems pretty cool. What else? Spresh immortal, fresh veggies, symbology. Alright. Well... Are there any more books that I need? Collecting fumes, can I make that? Yes, I can. Alright, let's make the book. Book, book. Well, we need to go chicken hunting, then. Onward to look for cocks. Hello. Gimme old fetters. Bunch of fetters. You got a hat? Yeah, beautiful, alright, alright. So we're finally progressing in the mod. It's only the, it's only the thirty-first now. Ah, well. Well... Well, maybe I can do something off-camera, maybe we can summon something spooky. Just for the sake of Halloween. Alright, where, where were we going to do? Uh, collecting fumes, there we go, okay, so belladonna I have. Cool, okay. So let's put in the sticks, and grab these, 'cause we're gonna be making a few books here. Alright, let's just organize, there, thank you. Alright. Okay. Okey dokey. Place you in there, and you in there. Just for now. Alright. So, what do I have on me? That'll work. Alright, so a book in the center. And then, belladonna. And then... A fetter. Charcoal. Easy enough, I have an axe right here, there you go, thanks. Thanks, man, alright, well, cook my chicken while you're at it, thanks. And there, and, beautiful. What you got for me? "Collecting fumes, the witch's oven gives the practitioner of the, practitioner of the art the opportunity to collect the fumes that they, that may be produced when cooking. Remember that the oven cannot smelt ore, but it does not cook, but it does cook a little faster than a furnace." Okay, fair enough. Place clay jars in the oven when cooked fumes, okay. Wood, fowl fume, uh, food, fowl fume, wood, fowl fume, okay. Cooking saplings also produce wood ash, and may also release a gaseous essence of the tree. Oak, exhale the horned, horned one, birth of the goddess, hint of rebirth, whiff of magic, odor of purity, reek of misfortune. Alright. So let's, so let's... Let's test some of that out, let's chop this tree down. See if we can get some of the saplings out of it. Yes, we did, beautiful. Because for, at least one potion, anyway. We're gonna need breath of the horned one. Oops, there we go. Alright. Back to the book. Birch, okay, well, we'll collect birch in a bit, oh, that's it, three pages, three pages, a three-page long book. Alright, birch is pretty easy to get, 'cause there's birch right around here somewhere. Got here, thank you. Oh, I only got one, that's okay. Well, it doesn't always guarantee them. Considering I just got four. And I got one out of the four, alright. Uh, let's put my other stuff in here, because we're gonna need some room. I'm such a friggin' pack rat, stupid. Okay, put you in there. Uh, put you in there, yep. Yep. Any room in here, yes, okay. There we go, there, there. There we go, there, there, that's it, alright. And the rest is growing nicely, okay, cool. What you got for me, beautiful, thank you kindly, alright. Least know what that is, that's good for, what else can we do, distilling. No, well, lucky me, okay. Let's make another book. Book of distilling. So another feather, okay. Ah, crap, watch me being here too. Yep. Wasn't that far, alright. Boop. Boop. Boop, what else? Yep. Boop. And boosh. There we go. What we got, distilling. Ensure the distillery is near to an altar, get power. Oh, okay. Place items in the distillery along with the required number of clay jars, wait for the distillation process to, bleh, wait for the distillation process to complete. Fowl fume, quick, quick lime, uh, resultant distill, it's, okay. Alright, so, distillery is pretty much for circle magic. Alright. Apparently there's an altar too that we can do. Come on, come on, there you go. Alright. Alter, 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 alter. Wolf alter. Ah, god. I have to be head wolves, I don't want to be head wolves. Alright, and a wolf's bane too. Okay, alright. Well, let's go wolf hunting. Well, first. First off, let's just. Drop that off. No, bring this with me, drop those off. And. Let's screw, just make another friggin' chest, I need the room. There we go. Bam, there. Let's just put our reference novels, reference novels, our reference, references, in there. I'm gonna put that in there, and that in there. That in there, and that in there. And you get the idea. Mer, yeah, here you go. Alright, well, since it's nighttime. Time to switch route. Anyway. Hey, what's up? Yeah? Cool, alright. Let's go wolf hunting, can I talk, can I talk to you from here? No, you're, you're a creeper, I see you, I see you, I saw you something move at the last second. Nope, no, 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 don't you pop, don't you pop. Don't, you do it. Eat sugar puffs, it's good for you. Still don't interest you, jeez, well, that's an Instagram model for you, a body like that, it's no wonder you won't pay attention to me. Spooky scary skeletons. Alright. Let's go on the hunt, holy crap, you look scary as hell. You hit your freak face a little bit, I was like, whoa, who's that? Ow, you little bitch. Come on, hit your friend, there you go. Hit him, thank you. Eat sugar puffs, god, you look scary. I'm not kidding you, that should freak me out a little bit. Alright. Onward to look for wolves. Okay. I saw you. Okay. Why do some of your skeletons look so weird, and clad in armor? That's weird, alright. Alright, so I will grind, I will eventually find some wolves, so I'll catch you on the next part. Alright, so, it took a quite a bit of trialing. Still no wolves, got some horses though, and another village. So. Can't seem to find a gate. Or do I really want to? Alright, cool. Nah, I'll keep them, thanks. Alright. There's a cave under here, okay, cool, I was like, where, why am I hearing stuff? Alright, what we got? Sure, sitting chisel, yep, bring that. Bone pickaxe. Um. I wouldn't do nothing. Alright, let's put those in there, uh, yep, grab that. Flint, copper, ye- okay. Uh, let's, oh, I got witch hands. I even know, I didn't even notice, cool, well, that's another ingredient I can dig. Let's just leave that here. Bring that, and. Sugar, redstone. Whoa. What the frig was that? Alright. Copper crossbar, alright, um. Let's put the print there. Get it. Thanks. Grab that. Cool, okay. Well, I know you guys are here, so I will mark you. Okey dokey. What else you guys got? So, let's mark it. Uh, stronghold. There we go. Alright. Supposed truck, okay. Meh, hell, you're a wizard. Buy books for a knowledge fragment. Other than that, I'm gonna bring my books with me. Alright. Cows, what else, that was a rail station. Just got in here. Alright, I, I can't take that friggin' face seriously. Well then, no wonder you guys have such, such luck, friggin' zombies found are right inside the village. Alright. There you go, good guy shelf. Alright. Uh huh. This is a really huge farm. Hmm. Yeah, like, dark, dense one. Okay. Think I found a new spot to move, alright. Well, I'm gonna cut it there, leave a comment if you'd like, if you'd like me to, uh, continue on this mod as one, uh, as well as doing the agri craft, because the magic really caught my attention, so let me know if you want me to do that on camera, because I'll probably do it off camera. Uh, as well as, uh, any other suggestions are great, uh, any positive reinforcement is even better. Uh, positive criticism is also, is also very much welcome, because I'm, as I've said before in my videos, I'm still, I'm still very much learning. Um, I'm making do with what I got, but, uh, as far as my software goes, I'm running a free twenty, twenty twelve program. Uh, simply because I can't really afford Sony Vegas. So, with that being said, like and subscribe, all that other fun stuff, and I'll catch you on the next one, peace.